The warrants themselves have their thing, they're just the pages. Those pages are incorrect. But the actual ones inside that list everything are okay. Just the cover pages are incorrect.
All right.
Second to the concert issue.
Yeah.
Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled school committee meeting for January 12th, 2016. This meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee Recording Secretary. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Before we call the meeting to order, I just want to welcome our two newest members to the school committee, John Olympio and Joe Amico. Welcome and happy new year to all. With that said, I'd like to stand and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Now we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes.
For the Chair, motion to approve minutes November 24th, 2015, regular school committee meeting.
Second. Motion by Ms. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have given each of the members a copy of a recommended correction and on the minutes of December 8th, the only information that I would put in to amend the minutes would be Mrs. Dunn requested edits to the minutes regarding a motion for an email to be included under written communications. Mrs. Dunn also requested a correction regarding additional discussion which took place under Section 10, Items for Next Agenda. I'm sorry, this is under Section 2. Let me back up for a moment. It's an amendment to the discussion under Section 2 of the December 8th minutes which is addressing September 24th minutes. So this is just to correct the record. Again, it would be on the motion, Mrs. Dunn requested edits to the minutes regarding a motion for an email to be included under written communications. Mrs. Dunn also requested a correction regarding additional discussion which took place under Section 10, Items for Next Agenda, and read into the record additional language concerning discussion which took place concerning redistricting Subcommittee and the Ad-hoc Subcommittee on Homeschooling and their reports. That is the only new information that I would request be added. In addition, just for clarification, on page 2 of the December 8th minutes, it states, "This motion was tabled," and I've just added the language by Mr. McGeehan for accuracy's sake. So that would be an amendment I would like to propose. So moved.
Mr. Hockman.
It's my understanding that the motion on the floor is for the November 24th minutes. Ms. Dunn is seeking to amend the December 8th minutes.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry.
So why don't we take this one at a time?
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
So on the amended minutes for November 24th, any further discussion? Ms. Dunn.
This was just to clarify, again, this is on everyone's desk, it's typed out under Section 10. Mrs. Carpenter wanted to clarify for the next meeting regarding the report of the redistricting committee. And I would like to preface this by, I stand corrected, there was no date. You were correct, Mr. Hockman, there was no date for that report. Mr. Hockman stated there was no date set for the report but hoped to have one by the end of the calendar year explaining the Subcommittee is scheduled to meet December 9th. Mrs. Carpenter also requested clarification regarding the report of the homeschooling Subcommittee report which was scheduled for presentation December 8th. Mr. Hockman suggested a motion to dissolve the Ad-hoc Subcommittee as it would not be needed going forward. Mayor Bettencourt stated he had not formed a Subcommittee but that he and Superintendent Levine had conducted quite a bit of research in the issues and were looking into the issue discussion between Mrs. Carpenter, Mr. Hockman, and Mayor Bettencourt. So that would be my proposed amendment to the 24th.
I'm waiting for a second before I discuss it.
You seconded the motion for the approval of the minutes, so on the amendment.
So I'd move my motion with the amendment. Second.
From Mrs. Dunn.
Seconded by Ms. Dunn. On the amended motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. I'm not quite sure where we're going here. And I'm disappointed frankly that we're starting a new year off in this fashion. I've, with the Vice Chairman who's Acting Chairman tonight, I, tonight, am starting my seventh year on this committee. And I don't have any recollection in those seven years where another member requested amendments to minutes, whether they be in executive session or a regular session, for what another member said. Now, during our last meeting, which was December 8th, we did discuss that there was an incorrect, that Ms. Macarelli had incorrectly stated who seconded a motion that Ms. Dunn had made. And those are the types of amendments that are typically made to our minutes. And our minutes are there to have a general reflection as to what occurred during the course of the meeting. I think that's what Robert's rules require. I think that's what Ms. Harris and Ms. Macarelli and whoever acts as our recording secretary typically do. The amendment that Ms. Dunn is proposing has, you know, all this punctuation including quotation marks. I don't see quotation marks in our minutes generally. I'm not quite sure what the purpose of it is. I think that the minutes accurately reflect what occurred. In addition to that, there's now additions that Ms. Dunn seeks to introduce based upon, or, excuse me, additions that Ms. Dunn has introduced relative to Mayor Bettencourt's statements. And he's not even here tonight, or at least at this time, to address them. I think it's highly inappropriate that this is even before us today. Frankly offended by the attempt by Ms. Dunn to make these corrections in the manner that she's seeking. And I don't understand the purpose. I would ask to strike the motion.
Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn actually brought this forward back in December, so I don't think we're starting off the new year with anything that wasn't expected. I don't have a problem with Ms. Dunn clarifying minutes of anything that I said. I think at any point in time, any member here can request that something that was said be included in the minutes. There are no rules regarding that. I don't have a problem with it. And I do trust Ms. Dunn and I know that she reviewed the tapes word for word and I'm fine with them, Ms. Dunn. Thank you.
Ms. Dunn.
Mr. Hockman, stay offended. Stay offended as long as you want. I'd brought this forward for accuracy in the minutes and I've done this many other times. And granted, it is a lengthy amendment to correct the minutes and I do apologize for the quotation marks. I never meant anything by those. But I wanted our minutes to be accurate. And at the end of our minutes, on November 24th, it states, "Mrs. Carpenter would like to see the report from the redistricting Subcommittee by the end of this year, but the discussion that took place at that time included the redistricting Subcommittee report as well as the Subcommittee report from the homeschooling Subcommittee." There was discussion about that and it should be reflected in the minutes. This was tabled at a December 8th meeting.
Ms. Dunn, if you could just refrain from speaking to Mr. Hockman directly.
Okay, through the Chair, I'm sorry. But this was brought forward, it had been tabled to tonight, this is just, this is just we do this every week in the course of business to amend or to correct the minutes. I consolidated this as much as possible. I made this as straightforward as possible. I, I don't know why anyone would be offended for accuracy in the minutes because those are reports going forward that people are going to be looking for and it was, it took place at this board. That's all I brought this forward for. I prepared it in writing so that it would be clarified for everyone to look at. And I stand behind what I've written. I don't know what else to do other than to say that we discussed redistricting Subcommittee reports and the homeschooling Subcommittee. If that's how short you'd want it, fine. We can do that, but that is, what's here presently is inaccurate and what I've tried to do is make it accurate. The same thing with the December 8th minutes.
Just for clarification, so, Ms. Dunn, the purpose of your amended motions for November 24th, is it just to include the items of redistricting and homeschooling because they were discussed and not mentioned in the minutes?
Yes, yes.
So, just to move this forward, would everybody be amendable to minimizing the correction to just adding the adaptation that homeschooling and redistricting was discussed at the end of the meeting? Would that be amendable?
That would be fine with me. I mean, seriously, if anyone wants accurate discussions of the meetings, they need to refer to the tapes. It's all on the tape.
Correct.
And I didn't have any type of ulterior motive through the Chair, I had no ulterior motive, and I wanted to start the year off on a good note.
So...
Unfortunately...
So, would the board be amendable just to make those two modifications?
Yeah, I'll...
If so, roll call vote.
I'll amend the motion to include, what will the wording be? How would the wording go? Discussion on...
Discussion at the end of the meeting, including homeschooling and redistricting to be brought forward at a later date.
I'll amend the motion to reflect the corrections of the words that were just listed.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Hockman?
No.
Mr. Rosignol? Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the December 8th regular school committee meeting minutes.
Motion to approve and accept December 8th, 2015, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second, I'd like to make a motion to amend those minutes to reflect that during the course of that meeting, Ms. Dunn inaccurately stated that I would have a redistricting Subcommittee report completed by December 31st, 2015. So moved.
You heard the amended suggestion from Mr. Hockman on the December 8th minutes. Ms. Dunn.
I'd further like to request that the amendment that I have prepared in writing, it's only the language on the motion, it is on your desks, it, just that I requested a correction regarding additional discussion which took place under Section 10, Items for Next Agenda, and read into the record additional language concerning the discussion which took place concerning the redistricting Subcommittee and the Ad-hoc Subcommittee on Homeschooling and their reports. That's the only change I would like to see. And, I'm sorry, the clarification that the motion was tabled by Mr. McGeehan, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, there's already a motion on the floor.
On the motion, any additional comment?
The motion that I made...
Well, actually, we're a little bit out of order anyways because you amended the original motion that Mrs. Carpenter made. So, Mrs. Carpenter's original motion, which has yet to be seconded, was to approve the December 8th minutes.
So moved. Second.
Seconded. And then you wish to make the amendment in discussion. And then, I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, you make, under discussion, you also want to add this section.
For further clarification.
For further clarification.
Which does, through the Chair, it doesn't contradict what Mr. Hockman is putting in. It doesn't, and I accept that.
I'm just not sure we're ready to have two motions on the floor.
Well, it's all one motion, then we're looking to add language to the minutes. So we can do this in two stages and just vote on the December 8th minutes and then we can add amendments per your request and per Mrs. Dunn's request, or we can wrap this all up in one. However the committee decides.
Through the Chair.
Ms. Carpenter.
Since it was my original motion and...
You can amend it.
The amendments through Mrs. Dunn, I understand, Mrs. Dunn, do you agree with Mr. Hockman that you inaccurately stated something that you would like that to also be in those minutes?
Of course. Please schedule my drawing and quartering for tomorrow morning, too.
Then I will move my motion with amended language that Mr. Hockman added that Mrs. Dunn inaccurately stated. And I will also add Mrs. Dunn's amendments to that motion.
Second.
Second.
No, he only seconded my original.
Original, so now it's amended.
I needed a second for an amended one.
And including Mr. Hockman's statement. We'll clean up the room after this. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is approval of bills.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve warrant 2906, amount of $1,551,487.67. Subject to audit.
Great, thank you, and I want to apologize for being late. I was actually at a Community Preservation Committee meeting just prior to getting here. And I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Mrs. Carpenter, Mr. Amico, Mr. Olympio. Looking forward to serving with all of you. Congratulations. I think we're going to be able to do some really good things for our school system working together and I'm excited about the future. A lot taking place this year with the new middle school, some other projects we're working on at the McCarthy and the high school, as well as some other exciting things that we're working on. So looking forward to working with all of you and I congratulate you moving forward. So, I'm sorry, we had the motion was made for approval of warrant...
2906.
2906, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none? Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, through you, to our business manager, ask a question. Is the next warrant in our agenda, should that be warrant 2907?
There's four tonight.
I know.
Yeah.
But two of them...
It's numbered wrong.
It's numbered wrong.
It's through the Chair. It's not numbered wrong if you go through the detailed warrant, but on the cover page it is.
Correct.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve warrant 2907 dated December 15, 2015, in the amount of $37,517.96. Subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol for approval of warrant 2907. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2916 in the amount of $807,470.96. Subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of warrant 2916, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve warrant 2917 in the amount of $74,326.89. Subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of warrant 2917, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next item, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything new on the MSBA Higgins project?
The building is completely enclosed now.
I was getting nervous, I thought you were going to say it was completely done. Except a little bit more, a little more to do.
The last time we were there, the front doors and the front windows needed to be put in and they are in, so they are working very, very diligently on the interior of the building. The nice weather has been a big help to them, but they will be very, very capable of completing everything, as they say, on time because of the fact that it is now completely interior work being done. Our next Higgins School Building Committee will take place at 4:00 PM on January 21st here at the Kylie. Again, that's an open meeting, everyone's invited to attend and things are moving well.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and I want to thank you for your continued chairmanship of that committee. You've been working on that now for a couple of years and it's good to have you working on that. Thank you.
It's a real pleasure, Mr. Mayor, it's really...
No, the meetings are excellent and I feel like there's progress each step of the way and it's great to see, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next item on continued business is lockdown procedures. Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the Chair to Ms. Murtagh, if you could have a copy of the document that Dr. Levine had sent us last meeting to Mr. Olympio and Mr. Amico for their purview. I know last meeting we had talked about the procedure that he was looking to implement, so I'd like to hold this off for next meeting, but make sure that the two new members have the document so that they can be informed moving forward.
Thank you. One additional item I wanted to bring up that's semi-related to this item here is, I submitted to the council a document that was given to me by Dr. Levine for consideration by the council. And it's something that had been, resulted from a review of our elementary schools after the lockdown event. And there were three schools that do not have Columbine doors. Three elementary schools, we have the west, the south, and the center do not have Columbine doors. So we're moving forward with the request of the city council to install those, hopefully February vacation. So each school then will be able to, and pretty much the Columbine doors are that the teacher can lock the door from the inside, you know, preventing somebody from getting in to the individual classrooms. And then the other item is something that we've discussed as well as a committee, is the blinds at the Burke School. Both those items have been submitted. It's a total of $86,000. I've asked the city council to receive those and have a vote. I anticipate that will be January 28th, will be received and marked for hearing that day. And it would be wonderful if members of the committee could join me that day with Dr. Levine and Mrs. Murtagh to make the request. I think it's important and it'll be, you know, a positive result from the events that took place that day and to make some changes at those schools that definitely are warranted. So I'll keep everybody updated. I think the plan right now is for January 28th for the hearing on that matter. Mr. Rosignol?
Yeah. So when you're requesting this money from the city council would this be, this would be its own entity, this wouldn't be part of a bigger scale? How are you putting the request forward for the city council?
This is a specific request just for these items. There'll be a larger one that we're considering to some different projects in the city, but this is one I felt that there was some urgency to and hoping to be able to accomplish this in February vacation. So I submitted this as an item just to come out of free cash. So the $86,000 would come out of free cash. It wouldn't be a part of any bond or anything like that, so...
Yeah, that's...
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So I just wanted to inform everybody that's taking place and I'll firm that up, but I think the council is set to receive it this Thursday, the 14th, and mark it up for hearing on the 28th. And I'll let everybody know that that's been confirmed. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward on a topic of their choosing and speak? Mr. Charis, I see that you're here, would you like to come up with public participation? Next item is superintendent's report. We have a donation, oh, actually, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Murtagh. Sorry, I just jumped in on you.
No worries. I would like to ask the committee to accept with gratitude a donation from Luters Environmental Inc. Corporation.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion to accept with gratitude from Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
In your packet is a letter sent to Robert Norton, President of the North Shore Medical Center at Salem, for serious consideration for funding through Factor IX Grant, the community health initiatives. Yes.
Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. Through the Chair to Ms. Murtagh. Could either you or Dr. Levine... Um, could either you or Dr. Levine follow up with a phone call and speak to him directly? I think that would be, um, well appreciated. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
I just wanted to mention that Frank Patrano, um, uh, visited us from the Boston Bruins at the Thomas Carroll School this past week in grade two, Mrs. Mason's class. Um, he is a great role model for students, and the second graders were thrilled to see him, and, um, we hope he comes back to visit. And Mr. Rosignol and Mr. Hockman were there to see it as well, so we want to thank the Carroll School and thank, um, Frank Patrano for coming to visit with us.
And he scored a goal the next, the next day. Yes, Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to Ms. Murtagh. Now, this event, this isn't the first time that a Bruins come to the Carroll School. It's, it's happened pretty regularly, hasn't it?
Uh, Mrs. Mason is a huge Bruins fan, as we all are, I hope. And, um, and she's been doing it for the last, um, umpteen years. She did it with her kindergarten students. Now she's a second grade teacher, and, uh, she has done ICE, I Can Excel. It's a, um, it's called ICE, I Can Excel curriculum, and she builds it into her own curriculum within her classroom.
Through the chair. It was just amazing to see the kids interact, and, and actually see him interact with the kids. He was down on his knees, and they were doing different math problems for him, and he was interacting them. It wa- it was really a great, um, it was a great morning. It was, it was pretty impressive, the interaction between the students and Frank, and it was good to see.
It's tweeted. We tweeted it.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, no, I concur with, with Mr. Rosignol's statements. I will say that, uh, that it appears that the skills drills that the second grade provided Frank in the hallway that morning helped him score that goals, uh, the next game. It was amazing to see those kids and the skills they have in hockey. Good job, Ms. Murtagh. Good job to all the staff at the Carroll School. It was a great event, and thank the Bruins, um, for providing this curriculum and assistance with our young kids. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Murtagh. Uh, next item is written communications. We do have a couple of written communications today. First one is from the MSBA regarding the SOI determination. And the second one is a communication from COPSYNC nine one one. Any comments or questions regarding those pertaining to those two?
Mr. Hockman, Mr. Rosignol's first.
Yep, Mr. Rosignol.
Thank you. Um, with, as the SOIs being due on April eighth, is it possible to have Tim Healy come before us just to give us a good assessment of where our buildings stand, what, what he thinks is priority? I know when we originally looked at hiring a, a true facilities manager, it was to make sure that we're, our, all of our facilities are in line and that we have a really good assessment of all of our needs. And I know we've all been, um, waiting for him to get up to speed on every building in the city. I think it'd just be great to have him come back before us to give us a true assessment of what he sees as our strengths in some of our buildings, what he sees as our deficiencies, and, and where he sees, um, us moving forward regarding our buildings in the future.
Great. I think that's an excellent suggestion, and, uh, perhaps, um, I'm, you know, I'm going to propose that we keep the building and ground subcommittee and maybe set up a meeting prior to our regular meeting on the twenty-sixth. Uh, there's a couple of other items that I'd like to bring forward, including one of those, and, um, you know, I, I want to throw this out for thought, uh, but, but maybe to move these meetings, the school committee meetings, to City Hall, um, would be something that I'd like to have discussed as well, um, in light of, uh, the, this, this facility. So, um, but I, I also think it's an important review. I think Mr. Healy will be able to speak in detail about every building now. And, uh, and, and that's where some of these, the projects that I mentioned earlier regarding the Columbine locks, um, are things now that, you know, need action. I think he'll be able to speak to that. So I'm going to invite him, um, if it's okay with the committee, to come on the twenty-sixth prior to our regular meeting. Maybe set up a subcommittee for six or six-thirty and have that discussion, um, as well as some other topics, but that's an important one. Particularly in light of some decisions we'll have to make regarding future submittals to the MSBA. Okay? Mrs. Dunn, then Mrs. Carpenter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, uh, request that the staff look at those submissions just to see if, um, the Welch School might qualify under a core program as opposed to the, uh, the ones we had been submitting for the, the window roof heating. Um, I think that that's one of the issues with, with the, with the Welch submittal as far as.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Yes.
If they could just look at it in that light, just to see. And, um, thank you. I think it is a good idea to hear from Tim.
Yep. No, I think, I think that's exactly right. And I do, I do know the issue you're talking about. I think that is something we ha- we can, uh, maybe get some answers to as well. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to point out, um, on this matter that we be time-sensitive because there is another date, um, February twelfth. If we're looking at any of the accelerated repair programs with windows, uh, roofs, boilers, that date is a little bit earlier.
Yep.
So if we could, um, just make sure if anything happens for cancellation, that we get right on it for at least that date.
Yes, absolutely, because there might be, yeah, that might apply.
There's two different dates there.
Yep, and the February twelfth date might apply to a couple of these projects, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Great, we'll do that. All right, any other comments on the two communications to be received today?
Oh, the COPSY.
Yeah, Mrs. Carpenter, on the COPSY.
The COPSY one. I'm just very pleased that we entered into a contract with, um, COPSY. It, it looks like things are going well. Maybe, um, Ms. Murtagh, a little bit down the road, if you'd like to prepare any type of, um, update that can be shared publicly with the committee. I'd appreciate that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item is subcommittee reports, and I did want to make a proposal today for consideration um, to consolidate and reduce the number of committees for this upcoming year. And, uh, and also have proposed committee assignments. The ones that I propose today would be education, which is really curriculum, program development, special education, vocational programs. Uh, that would be one committee. The second would be finance, which would be for negotiations for our contracts, uh, working with our city unions, uh, cap- potential capital improvements, and school department budgets. School safety, uh, self-explanatory, would be rega- issues regarding, uh, our buildings. Uh, also potential traffic issues that take place at some of the elementary schools, which can be challenging, particularly during the winter. Uh, those would be addressed in the school safety committee. Athletics and wellness. I thought that the wellness committee has been doing an excellent job under Mr. Rosignol's guidance. I thought adding athletics, uh, the many different challenges that we face with, with athletic programs, I thought that was worthy of, of further discussion in a committee. So it would be athletics and wellness. Uh, quality and standards, uh, extremely important committee that would continue. Uh, the liaison to city council advisory boards. It's really just a combination, uh, the important boards there, certainly PAB, uh, parent advisory board, our student advisory board, as well as, uh, city council, and maybe even some interface with the, um, state representatives or state senator over di- different issues that pop up, and I thought that would be a worthy committee. And then building and grounds. I was thinking originally of putting building and grounds under finance, but I thought that, uh, there's a lot of important topics to be discussed, and I thought that merited its own committee. Uh, so I have proposed, I tried to be very balanced in giving everybody three assignments. Uh, but really, a- as you all know, and I know many of you already take advantage of this, and I know Councilor Miko and Olympia will as well, uh, come to a lot of the subcommittee meetings anyway, even if you're not technically a voting member. Uh, but a lot of important topics take place in education and finance, and certainly all the other committees as well. I, I thought by consolidating and combining, um, I thought that was the appropriate action to take, and I, I moved that forward. Um, I tried to do the best I can. I wasn't able to give every committee member, uh, every request, uh, but I wanted to try to, um, make sure that people's interests were, uh, were recognized with the assignments. Uh, but again, know that every committee is, is open for everybody to come and discuss the, the important topics. So that's what I proposed today, and, uh, cer- but I'm certainly open for any discussions or, or comments or recommendations. Yes?
Through, through the chair. The only question I have, and thank you. I, I actually appreciate this. I think it'll be a little bit more concise and, um, and, and thank you for the committee assignments. Uh, the only question I have actually, um, through the chair to Mr. Hockman. I, I know, um, you're wrapping up the redistricting committee. Will you be giving us a presentation or feedback of what came out of that committee as, as our final wrap-up?
Yeah. Through, through the chair to Mr. Rosignol. Interestingly enough, the committee has decided that they're not done with their work.
Okay.
Um, but I do, uh, have some materials to provide to the ki- this, uh, school committee orally today. It's not, it's a status, essentially, report as to where things stand. Um, and I don't know if the mayor wishes to go into it now, or when that report is due, or.
No, if you, if you were comfortable giving a little preview of coming attractions, I, you know, I know you've had some discussions with Dr. Levine, and, um, if you're comfortable, you know, giving us a little bit of a report now, that's fine.
Thank you. Um, so the redistricting subcommittee last met, I believe it was December eighteenth. It was a week later than we originally, uh, intended to meet. There was some, um, scheduling concerns that we agreed to postpone the meeting for a week. And at that meeting, we started out with a conversation about the purpose of the subcommittee as, as it was created by Mayor Betancourt. Um, and, uh, at that time Superintendent Mastercola, uh, who was the chairman of that, uh, I think co-chairman of that subcommittee with Mr. Kenniston, both of whom, uh, are no longer with us. Um, so it, uh, so during the course of the conversation, I, I, um, asked committee members if they thought that we had reached our, um, intended purpose. If we had, and, uh, I think it was unanimous vote. I could be, I could be wrong. If it wasn't unanimous, it was close to unanimous, that they, uh, believed that we had not, uh, and wished to continue, um, on with the task that was put before them about a year ago. I mean, I think it was about a year ago that we started, uh, this subcommittee. So I asked the committee members to make a, a, a motion, and, um, we, so Ms. DiLoretto made a motion to continue the work. It was seconded. There was a vote, and, um, so I can report out to this committee that that's their hope and intent is to continue the work, um, that was performed. And then I did explain that there was a, um, a desire from committee members, school committee members, to receive some information as to the activities of the, uh, redistricting subcommittee. Um, and being that we were meeting in the third week in December, um, Mr. Kenniston was, uh, retiring December thirty-first, Christmas, New Year's, and so on, uh, I didn't think that there would be time to put together a formal, uh, report, nor did I think that we would, we've gotten to the point where we could submit a complete report. So, uh, Mr. Asidro made a motion, um, authorizing me to issue an oral report based upon some of the information that, um, we've come up with so far. So, uh, here goes. The, um, redistricting subcommittee is a large group. It, it was a larger group than I intended to, um, wh- when I, when I brought up the subject, uh, I was hoping that we would have a group of about six or ten people and no more. Um, and at the time that the subcommittee was created by the mayor, um, Mr. Mastercola, uh, sent out solicitations to, through the normal course for people, and we got a tremendous amount of, uh, interest in this, in this subcommittee. Um, and he, uh, thought it was best, and he was the chair of the subcommittee. I kind of took over, uh, informally um, as a result of, um, events that took place between then and, and now. Um, but Mr. Mastercola thought it would be, uh, worthwhile to keep everyone that, uh, asked to be on the subcommittee on the subcommittee. So that left us with over thirty people on the subcommittee, which makes, uh, meetings unwieldy and difficult. And, and, um, I do, uh, have a, a, additional respect for Ms. Dunn now after going through this for what the great work she's doing on the Higgins, uh, project committee, because I know there's a lot of people in that committee, too. In any event, we broke up into subgroups because it was just easier to get work done, long and the short of it. We started looking at a variety of things, and I can report to the committee that one of the things that we looked at was retention. Retention within elementary schools, because we're talking about elementary schools, and I know that redistricting becomes an emotional subject.
Just.
Yeah, on that, Mr. Rosignol?
Yeah, through the chair. When you, when you say re- retention, are you talking about students or staff?
Students.
Okay.
Yeah, so redistrictings, we, e- everyone started out the conversation a year ago, understanding that this is an emotional subject, and it's not something that we take lightly. No one in this committee takes lightly, and, um, wanted to kind of get a feel for impact. Um, and, and I didn't, you know, I don't think anyone really had an idea as to how many, so we started looking at how many kids started kindergarten in, in elementary school, um, six years ago, that are now in the fifth grade in the same elementary school. And, uh, i- it, some of the results of that were somewhat surprising. Um, the highest level of retention, uh, is the Burke. The Burke has eighty-seven percent of the students that are in fifth grade now that started in kindergarten at the Burke. Uh, and the lowest level is the Welch, which had thirty-eight percent of the kids who started in, who were presently in fifth grade that started at the Welch in kindergarten. And most of the numbers are closer to the Welch than they are to the, to the Burke. The South is the only other school with, um, a retention of students for all sixth grades in excessive, uh, in excess of sixty-three percent. So the numbers that, uh, we, we came up with, with the McCarthy's retention rate is forty-eight percent, Carroll forty-nine, Brown fifty-nine, West sixty-two, Center sixty-three, South eighty-one, and Burke eighty-seven.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Talkman, but those are students who enrolled as kindergarten students and just completed through the fifth grade?
Correct. Right. Um, and it was just some interesting information because I, I was surprised by that. Uh, I don't know that I was aware that the numbers were, um, as low as they are, you know, the, um, we, I think Peabody prides itself on neighborhood elementary schools, and I think we do a good job at that. And this information may contradict that a little bit, but it was just, you know, in the beginning, we started out on a, a fact-finding mission to, to gather as much information, um, that, that we could. We did look at class size. I mean, class size is the goal. Uh, two of the things that we talked about throughout the meetings were, uh, equality with regard to class size. And, um, we, we found that, um, there isn't as much disparity in class size in, in general across the city as I thought going into it. There is some disparity in, in class size, but, uh, not, um, so, so for example, um, I believe it's the West second grade or third grade has, uh, fourteen kids or, or in one class and thirteen kids in another class, but that isn't generally, that isn't necessarily true throughout the school. So it's not as if the whole building, um, has classes that are thirteen and fourteen, where, um, the, the, uh, Carroll, you know, has classes that are, um, twenty-six and twenty-seven. In fact, we found that Carroll was more like, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, which is a class size that I think this committee has historically felt comfortable with. Um, so we didn't find that, uh, as of now, that there was any, that there was, um, significant disparity with class sizes building to building. Grade to grade within buildings, yes, but not building to building. What we did find is that, um, population within buildings was, was hugely different. So in other words, um, you know, the West, for example, and I, and I don't mean to, uh, pick on them, the least populated building, and the Carroll, which is the most populated building, the difference between number of students, uh, I want to say was close to four hundred. Um, a- and so there were more classes in the Carroll to accommodate for that, but that's just a big difference in, um, number of people. And when we look at things like specialists, um, there may be a disparity of, uh, of services provided to some kids just based on building population. And again, this is a preliminary report. This isn't designed to, um, be a final report or even necessarily be considered for budget purposes this year. We then looked at, uh, these things were all taking place simultaneously, you know, these various subgroups. We looked at, um, community development. We looked at what's going on in the city in terms of build-out. Um, we found primarily that, um, West Peabody is essentially built out. Um, there isn't a lot of construction taking place in West Peabody. If construction was taking place, it was generally single-family homes. There aren't many multifamilies. There aren't many apartment complexes, um, west of Route One. We did note that, uh, there were some, um, projects, you know, certainly on Bartholomew Street that we considered, um, that, uh, over, over on Shore Drive, Shore Road, um, there's an expansion that is intended to take place that may put pressure on the center, uh, where those kids presently go, and is already, in terms of population within a building, already bursting at the seams. Um, there's some conversation about, uh, development on one fourteen, um, behind Verizon off Mount Pleasant Street in that area. And we don't know where that, where that's going. Also, at the time, we were cognizant of the statement of interest that was, uh, submitted to the state for the Center School, so we weren't sure how that would impact. Doctor, Mr. Mastercola and Dr. Levine both talked about, um, the beginnings of, of early childhood, um, education. education, and we started looking at how that would impact buildings. We had a committee who, that was chaired unfortunately by Ms. Cargill, who recently passed away, and I'm sorry for her family's loss, that went to each building to look at how spaces were utilized with the assistance of Dave Kenniston, as you can imagine, with a hard hat and, you know, his headlight on, and maps of tunnels within buildings and what exists behind walls. And, you know, we, they started, we started looking at the impact that something like Chromebooks would have in terms of freeing of space within buildings. So just to give you, we did start looking at carve-outs, if you will, for shifting populations within buildings. It's extremely difficult. We were trying, and I'm not prepared to really get into much detail about that tonight, I just can tell you that it's extremely difficult to look at, and we're trying to prevent moving lines all around the city. What we're hoping to do is keep neighborhoods together, and maybe, particularly neighborhoods that were on a bus already, that are presently going to one school, and perhaps keep that neighborhood together on a bus going to a school that may have a little more space available to them. We started looking at, and the concern with the extracurricular activities, or where kids play their extracurricular activities, to keep them with teammates at the elementary level. So those are the considerations that we looked at. We did look at some transportation options that were available, and then by the time we got to the point of, for those of you that have worked with Mr. Kenniston on mapping out where students are, him moving those dots, you know, we were gradually winding down during Mr. Kenniston's tenure, and we got to it to some extent, but not to the extent that we would need to. Dr. Levine has come to the last few meetings, I believe he addressed the Carroll School PTO about this subject as well, and the way he brought it up, and it was discussed certainly at our last meeting and also at our November, I believe it was a November meeting, was that there's no dire need, there's no urgency to pushing this along, that it's something that we should consider and continue to look at. He suggested that we take a hiatus of about six months and then reconvene as things develop, as statements of interest are resubmitted, as we see kindergarten enrollment for the next, for the incoming 17, 16, 17 school year and things along those lines. I am able to provide some additional information from some of the subgroups that I haven't talked about tonight at a later meeting, but I don't think it's appropriate at this point to submit any final report, because I don't think that this subcommittee has gotten to that point yet.
That's fair. Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Any comments at this time, Mr. Rosengel?
Through the chair. Thank you. Much appreciated. Going into this, this has been a topic of discussion since Mike Barfanti was, we first got on the board, and then it was looking at closing a school. My big concern with redistricting is, like you said, building space. That ultimately, to me, is the biggest issue. You have, because I do think class sizes, for the most part, are pretty steady across the board, whatever elementary school we're really talking about. The difficulty is the space each building provides and the amount of students that each building houses. Even though the Carroll is a relatively new school, you're talking about 600 kids in it. That building wasn't designed for 600 kids. So although it's one of our newest buildings, it's one of the ones really busting at the seams, and as Mr. Huckman pointed out, you're talking about, that won't really affect your classroom per se, but it will certainly affect your music and your arts and your, and those, you don't want to see art on a car, and you don't want to see kids lugging their musical equipment and having to do it at their desks. So I hope that if you do take a hiatus, that's fine, but I just, I hope this doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Because I don't see this committee as what it was originally intended seven years ago as the reason for closing the school, because I don't think that that's the case at all. And having a kid that, my daughter, now she's 19, but when she was in second or third grade, we went through redistricting. So I see it from a parent's perspective as well, and it was difficult for the kids to change boundary lines and go to a different school, but it's a one-year trouble for the rest of their life's solution, really. Because they end up seeing those same kids on the soccer field or on the basketball court. So as much as it was really a challenge as a parent, the following year, you still saw the same kids in the same events, it just wasn't necessarily at school. So I hope this does kind of continue more as a dialogue. One thing that I would recommend, when they redistricted back then, like I said, this is, you're talking 11, 12 years ago, it was because the Kylie was shut down and the McCarthy was opened, so you weren't going to have students driving past the school to go to the West. So it was immediate, and it was lines in the sand, it was neighborhoods divided in half. What I would like to see, if we do end up moving forward with a redistricting plan, making it optional for the parents, so if you have a fourth grader, you can keep them in their neighborhood school for the remainder, and then they move on to Higgins where it's open for the whole city. And you leave it up to the parents, make it mandatory maybe for the kindergarten students who don't know any different anyways, and the parents can feel comfortable in their now neighborhood school. But for the kids that are in that school, let them finish out their time before they move on to the Higgins. I just think it's a lot, it's an easier transition for the parents, for the student, and it makes it a little bit easier when you're drawing those lines in the sand. Just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengel. Good, Mrs. Kopener?
Thank you. Thank you for the information, Jared. So just to recap a little bit, this is a committee that's been standing for a while, and the name of it, redistricting, is what I thought the intent and the charge was. We have, we have schools split down Lowell Street. We still do have kids who drive by one school to get to another school. So I think my question is twofold, is is this charge still the same, and is there still a charge? Because based on committee assignments, it looks like we're not having this committee anymore. So I'm just looking for clarification on what we're still doing with it.
Yeah, I, I'm very comfortable with it continuing to meet and move forward. I just didn't include it, because I think I had put that aside for a moment until I got some information from Mr. Huckman. But I do think that there's important topics that have to be discussed, and if we want to take a short break, I'm comfortable with that. But I do think it merits some continued consideration. Just some of the information you provided today I found very interesting, and I think that stuff, I think that's information that we need to know when we get into other deliberations in terms of school building maintenance and in terms of curriculum and things of that nature. So I do think there's value to the committee, and there's a lot of good people on that committee, and I appreciate their work. So I'm very comfortable with it moving forward, and, yep. Mr. Rosengel? Do you all say, Mrs. Kopener?
Yes, thank you.
Just really quickly. If it's still going to be intact, my only question would be, where you said that there, I'm sorry, through the chair, Mr. Huckman, where you said there's a number of people on this committee, would you like help?
Mr. Rosengel, I would always accept help. I can tell you that I believe that the population or the size of the committee is going to decrease.
Okay.
I didn't feel, with the break that we're going to be taking, and the time and work that people have already committed to this subcommittee, I didn't feel it was fair to keep people lingering, if you will. So I have polled committee members, asked them to consider whether or not they wish to continue or not, and not everyone who was on the subcommittee originally is going to be back. There's a fair amount of people that will be back, but it's a more manageable group, but I'm happy to get help.
Sure. I think we have a volunteer. So certainly, I think that the mission, or at least the intent of the committee has changed, you know, certainly that, you know, but closure of an elementary school has been not on my radar, and I don't think it's really on any of our radars. But I think it is important value, it's important and valuable information to gather that can really play a role in future discussions. I think it is important to examine each school, the available space, the impact on neighborhoods, things of that nature. I do think there's a lot to be gained from that.
Yeah, if I may, closing of a school was never a consideration for this subcommittee. We never put that on the table, it was never thought about, never discussed. I will say that one of the difficulties, and, you know, now that statements of intent are being reintroduced and things like that, one of the difficulties with moving kids around in the city is the, there's a four and a half mile gap between the center school and the McCarthy school. It's a huge distance with traffic on Lowell Street in the morning to get kids from the center or south side of town to the west side of town, if that's where, you know, the data would lead us to shift kids, and that's why we were looking...
Just take out those highways.
That's probably, maybe we can ask the mayor to get rid of the lights, the traffic lights? No, but that's why we were looking at pockets as opposed to line shifting, because if we can just get one bus, you know, moving from a particular neighborhood, you know, going as opposed to shifting six or seven more buses and adding to the traffic problems and things like that. But those are some of the considerations.
Great. Thank you. Is there, so is everybody okay moving forward with these committee assignments? Certainly if issues pop up, important topics, we can set up ad hoc committees to discuss certain, you know, timely topics for a short period of time, but I thought these were, originally I was thinking six, but upon further reflection, I thought the building and grounds was one to continue, just based on some of these important decisions that we have to make regarding our school buildings. And so I'm going to move forward then and submit those to the secretary, and those will be the standing committees going forward. And a lot of these, a lot of this information I gained from our past policies, they tweaked it a bit. I had a conversation with Mrs. Dunn, we tweaked it a bit, and, but I felt that this was, gives us a good start. Again, it can, you know, we can make some changes, and I did, I felt it was important to allow Mr. Miko, Mr. Olympia to kind of get their feet underneath them, a lot's going to be getting thrown at them, and I didn't give any chairmanships to those. They're on a lot of committees, but I felt it was appropriate to allow them to, to kind of, you know, get their feet underneath them and things. So I asked each of you to chair a couple of different committees. So going forward, we'll have that set up as part of our regular meeting, a subcommittee reports, and with the intention to have a building and ground subcommittee meeting on the 26th. Mr. Rosengel?
Just real quickly, on the wellness subcommittee, just as an update, our next meeting for the, what would you call that? The board for the high school, health clinic? Sorry, thank you. The next meeting's going to be January 21st. But through the chair to Ms. Murtagh, I would put in a request to have Allison Kilcoyne come before the board the first meeting in February, just to give a presentation of what that clinic's been doing, the volume that they're experiencing, and their goals moving forward.
Thank you.
The 21st.
Is the next...
You're still going to have that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, it's at 5:30 at the high school.
At the high school?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Dunn?
And Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I could give us a very brief PAB report. We had a parent advisory board meeting in December.
Sure, if you'd like to give us a report, sure.
We met on December 21st and had a very good showing, the majority of members were there, there were 10 people there, and a member of the public even attended, and that was a first for us. Many of the items that were brought forward by parent advisory board with questions about having a parent advisory board email, communications in case of emergency, and the Epi pen cabinets, the members were all brought up to speed on that, and they would be bringing that message back to their PTOs at their respective schools. They also had a discussion about before and after-school care. One of the parents actually brought forward a survey that, a recommended survey, and the parent advisory board members thought it was very good, they had a little bit of additional information that they put on, and if, you know, I'd like to forward that to you and Dr. Levine. They also spoke about having the parent advisory board meetings at various schools so that they can get familiar with the other schools, so we're going to try to do that. And parent advisory board members are working hard right now to get the pulse of their school so that they can find out what the issues are, what people are happy with, and come back with those at our next meeting. So we, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 25th of January, location to be determined. And thank you for putting, allowing me to stay on parent advisory board and for putting Mr. Miko and Mr. Olympia on that subcommittee. I think you'll both enjoy it very much. It's very informative, and I learn a lot from those parents every meeting.
Great.
And they're very enthusiastic and very supportive of the schools, which is a nice, it's a nice group to work with, so thank you.
Excellent. Great. So any new business we handle in the regular course, just for Mr. Miko, Mr. Olympia? Anything that you would like on the agenda? The superintendent and I set the agenda prior to the meeting. If there's any topics that you would like to have, please email those to me and the superintendent. Topics that you'd like to have for future meetings, we can, we try to accommodate all requests, so just going forward, that's how we do it. All right. Anything further before we adjourn? Thank you for a good meeting, and looking forward to a great year, so thank you each of you.
Thanks so much.
One other quick item I just wanted to mention, school business manager search, it's something that Dr. Levine had asked me to bring up today. He would like to start thinking ahead and wanted me to ask if there'd be one or two members that would like to be on the search committee for the school business manager. So just grab me later, let me know if this, it's something that interests you, but obviously you know how important that decision is. So thank you.
I'm safe.
You're safe.
Yeah, actually, I will. Which way is we going to see? This is...
It's wet.
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 It's wet.